I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:30. And please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, I'd like to welcome Rob Hudson to the school board.
Thank you very much. Glad to be here. Thank you.
Item C, adjustment to the agenda.
Yes, for the members of the board, there's a recommendation for adding one item, which would be report on Maine School Management Association Conference, adding that to new business J is number four, and renumbering the remaining items.
I make a motion to add number four, the Report of Maine School Management Association Conference to J New Business, and renumber remaining items as recommended by the superintendent.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor? Thank you. Item D, approval of minutes for October 10th, 2017.
I move that we approve the minutes of the October 10th, 2017 Board Meeting as presented.
Oh, second thing. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
I probably shouldn't vote.
Okay.
So that's 4-0, one extension?
And one extension. Okay. Minutes for October 23rd, 2017.
I move that we approve the minutes of the October 23rd, 2017 Special Board Meeting as presented.
Oh, second thing. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor? Would you like to abstain?
I would.
Item A, communications correspondence.
I've circulated two letters of resignation for the board's review. I'll address them in my report.
Thank you. Item F, public participation. Item G, Administrator Board Reports. Mr. Clifford.
Good evening. You have my report. Just a couple of things before I get to Girls' Cross Country. We have a Student of the Month, which Ellsworth High School used to have a few years ago. And last spring, it was Talk Amongst the Teachers and Administration, and then looking at it over the summer, and we decided to do that. So each month, we'll recognize a student. Right now, it's a senior. And qualifications for it is obviously being a senior. Grades are working to potential, a positive attitude, leadership qualities, demonstrates responsibility, respect for peers, faculty, and staff, participates in co-intracurricular activities, exemplary attendance, cooperation, considerate others, and work ethic. And this year, or for the month of September, Dylan Taplin was our winner. And that is chosen by, we have a junior-senior team, and that's chosen by that team. And for VPA Student of the Month, that's Visual and Performing Arts, and they've been doing this for a while. So each month, we'll have an assembly, and we'll announce both winners. And for the month of September, it was Eliza Dwyer. So congratulations to both of them. Really good kids. Parent-teacher conferences are going on at the high school tonight and Thursday night. So any parents that haven't signed up, Thursday night is open also, so they can call the high school tomorrow and make reservations to see teachers. And we had a really good turnout tonight, so I was happy with that. Could I ask the girls' cross-country team, please come on up? Members? And Coach Lukini? So the girls' cross-country team had a terrific season. They finished second in regionals and fifth.
Fifth, right?
Yeah, and the state championship. Pulled off some upsets in the regionals and the championship, and it was great to see. And they were also recognized for sportsmanship.
That's excellent. That's a very important award.
Dan, can I get a picture also with you standing there?
Nice.
He still missed Beckett, but...
That's right.
And he misses you.
Yeah, that's right.
You don't know how much, so...
Do you guys want to say your name and what year you are?
Caitlin Bagley. I'm a senior this year.
Kristen Mosley. I'm a sophomore.
Caitlin McPherson, and I'm a sophomore.
Lillian Frank, and I'm a freshman.
Abby Masguy, and I'm a freshman.
Any questions?
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Excellent job.
Mr. Newitt.
Good evening. Mr. Middle School, I want to start by saying a real big thank you to all the teachers at the school. And the reason for that is they've had a huge task this year, as have teachers in the other grade levels with regard to shifting to standards-based, common assessments, and standards-based grading in a new jump rope program. There's a pretty big learning curve when it comes to both of those things, and the teachers have done a really nice job with that. Students in this system require multiple opportunities sometimes to meet the standards, so that's more effort on the teacher's part to meet with the students after school or during the day during what we call RTI time, to get those students up to speed so that they can actually pass the assessment a second time, and some a third, fourth, fifth. I'm not kidding you. Sometimes it takes up to six times before the student can meet the standards. So teachers have really worked very hard with that, and people like April Clifford and the IT staff have done well to meet with teachers, to teach them how to actually put those grades into the jump rope program, so that parents now can access grades 24/7 and see how their child is doing, what standards have been met, which assessments have been passed, and which ones have not. So just want to acknowledge the hard work they put in. Mr. Clifford mentioned parent-teacher conferences. We had ours already in the last week in October, and we had 83% turnout rate, which is very high for us. It's almost perfect through fifth and sixth grade, and it falls off a bit at seventh and eighth, but I was very pleased with the 83%. This Saturday, EEMS hosts the District 6 Instrumental and Vocal Honors Festival. It's our second year of doing this. We'll have 169 students from all over this area coming to EEMS to work with guest conductors. And we have 14 students ourselves from EEMS, and there's a concert at 5:00 PM for those that wish to attend. And it's kind of taking the best from all over and kind of having an all-star night with regard to music. It's not on my report, but I'd like to thank the Ellsworth Fire Department, Ellsworth Police Department. They helped get about 366 kids and all our staff across 1A into the high school during an evacuation drill. And it's something that we practice annually. Today was our day, and it was nice to have that support. I was reminded by the fire chief, if it was a real emergency, they wouldn't be there across from us because they'd be at one of the schools dealing with whatever emergency was taking place. So, you know, we're prepared for that as well. The students were dead silent on the way over, took attendance at the middle school, took attendance once we were in the auditorium, dead silent, and came back dead silent. They get the idea of what the drill is all about. And, you know, you can talk to the fire department, police department, they're very pleased with how we do these drills. In co-curricular news, last week, we had Darth Vader, Lou Skywalker, and Princess Leia at our school. They were acting in William Shakespeare's Star Wars, which was put on by our drama club on two evenings, and, excuse me, actually, one evening, Thursday evening, Thursday morning for all our students, and Saturday matinee. We didn't have any shows on Veterans Day holiday. I'd like to thank Jasmine Ireland and Sherri Cox for directing the show. It got better each of the three times they performed it. And I'm really glad they added the microphones because it was really hard to hear the first day. And our poor kids, they were excellent again, great audience, but when they put the mics on the kids, it made a big, big difference. Our basketball and cheerleading teams have been selected. They're practicing already. All of our coaches are back from last year, which is excellent. First game for all teams is November 30th. We actually have a preseason tournament for our girls this Saturday. We are in need of a chess club coach and a wrestling coach. I didn't give you the resignation of the wrestling coach. That's a new thing. And, you know, sorry to see those coaches go, is Adam Wilson and, I think it's Rick Will, son, Aaron Will, sorry, is the wrestling coach. So anybody who's interested in coaching out there in TV land, love to hear from you. In apparent news, retakes for pictures are Wednesday, November 29th, the week after we get back. And activity night is coming up on December 1. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCluskey.
So I'd like to start off with talking about, as you have in my report, the, we're really excited about how things are developing with The Grand, and we have a couple of people here in the audience. We have Nick and Nicole here. They're performing a play called Alice Down the Rabbit Hole, and Nicole Cardano, if you don't mind just waving, she's the liaison from The Grand that comes to our school, and she'll be in twice this week. She was in today. She'll be back again on Thursday. And she's working with our grades two and three classes, preparing them for the show that they'll be seeing. Is it later in November or early December they're coming?
Actually, it's Friday.
It's this Friday.
Friday for Alice.
Friday for Alice. So she's working with them and kind of like preparing them with some improv theater experiences, and then they'll get a chance to see the show on Friday this week. So we're really excited about that. As Mr. Newitt talked about jump rope, it's been a very big learning curve for all of our staff, and I wanted to give a shout-out thank you to April Clifford, who's just, you know, we're just extremely fortunate to have her working with our district. She's so knowledgeable, extremely patient, and she really has gone over and above, talking with her about some of the elementary staff who, you know, are trying their best but still aren't quite understanding it, or might be a little fearful of how to do it correctly, you know? I think a very common attribute teachers have is they want to be perfectionists, and they don't want to do it the wrong way. So teachers are really trying to do it the right way. And anyway, I worked with April a little bit to schedule some extra time, especially for April. So she set aside an hour yesterday to have teachers drop in to IT from 3:00 to 4:00 o'clock. And then she set aside an entire day for tomorrow, where I set up a Google Doc by appointment with April and Ginger from IT as well, where teachers could actually sign up during like their prep periods to come in and actually bring hard copy work that they're trying to get done on jump rope, and then have one of the ladies sit down with them for like 45-minute periods and kind of walk them through that. So I heard Monday evening went well, Monday afternoon went well, and we'll see how things go for tomorrow with the teachers that are going in. They can go in by twos, or they can go in by a team. So I just want to really thank April for working with us on that. You have my enrollment update. As you noted, or as you note, there's just a couple of grade levels that fluctuated by two or by one. So this month compared to last month, we're up by two students. We had a nice visit with Commissioner Hassan from the Department of Education. He came in last Thursday on November 9th. You've heard about the Momentum Project. You'll be hearing more about that. But it's a project that started, the pilot began in March of this calendar year, which was last school year, and the purpose of the project is to improve literacy scores, and it's about giving students in the K through 3 grades one-to-one iPads, and then training teachers on different apps to use and different ways to involve literacy, excuse me, with the children using these iPads. So there's about nine schools in the state of Maine that are doing this piloted project called Momentum with the iPads. So Commissioner Hassan came in to observe one of our first-grade classrooms, and then he spoke with approximately 20 minutes, he spoke with a piloted group of teachers, about five teachers. The, I invited Ellsworth American to come in, so I think that's going to be, you'll be reading about that visit here soon. He visited Alexis Chapman's first-grade classroom, and Rachel came in, I stayed, and we had a few other, some of the literacy coaches that are helping out with the project came. And Commissioner Hassan's a very big, tall man. He's like 6'6" or 6'8". So when he's sitting in a chair, he's still large to a first-grade, you know, student. And he has a very deep voice. So, and I was just so amazed at how unintimidated our first graders were with, and he's a very gentle man. He's a very nice man. And he interacted really with probably half dozen to eight of our students, and they would bring over the work, and they were just reading to him, or he'd ask them questions. It seemed to be a very, very positive visit. We're hoping he had kind of dangled the care out there that he may be back in the spring, you know, to follow up. So I'm hoping that he has a chance to do that. This is the first year since I've been in Ellsworth, and this is my fifth year. Mr. Newitt mentioned earlier the evacuation drill. It kind of came about with some hurdles that were thrown at us. We ended up splitting the drill this year, so we did it one day, and he did it another day. We're going to, you know, I want to talk to Mr. Newitt about that because that may be a model we may choose to do in the future because it seemed to go really well. Instead of involving 840 kids, you know, we cut it in half, you know, over a two-day period. But we did ours last Tuesday, I think it was, or, excuse me, last Thursday on November 9th as well. It was right before Commissioner's visit. But had some wonderful feedback from Ellsworth PD, and again, I want to thank them for their work. And I spoke with Superintendent Higgins today about the drill. There's some recommendations, that would be some minor tweaks for our pre-K program in particular. And nothing they did wrong, it was just a suggestion to make it easier for them. So I'm going to be working with another business in town to see if that would work out with them, if we could send them somewhere else. But other than the recommendation they had for pre-K, they were extremely impressed with our staff and students, and I want to give a public thank you to our staff for how well they prepared our students. I mean, we're talking about 440 students making this transition, and they were, you could hear a pin drop when we get to the place we needed to be to retake attendance. We weren't there, I wouldn't say any more than 10 minutes to, you know, take the attendance, make sure everyone was accounted for, and we're heading back out to where we need to be back into our classrooms. So great job by the students, great job by the staff. I believe Mr. Newitt also mentioned, I think he was copying off my report, I'm not sure. We do have the Hands Across America, excuse me, Hands Across Ellsworth Food Drive. Maya Center will be here tomorrow morning at 8:30 to be picking up whatever food families brought in and donated. There's food boxes throughout the hallways, and we're going to give them what we have, going to give them what we have. Parent-teacher conferences went very well. I have not had an opportunity yet to get a total percentage, like Mr. Newitt reported for his side, but I will have that for you next month. But the building was full, teachers were very busy. We took an opportunity, at least I did too. We started this last year with our new teacher evaluation tool, Teach Point, a local, one of the domains of Teach Point is to give teachers feedback on their interactions with parents. So the parent-teacher conferences is a great opportunity to give them that piece. So I sat in all night long through appointments, you know, I didn't surprise teachers or parents just by popping in. I asked when would be a good time to pop in. So through appointments, I sit on a lot of different conferences, and teachers did just, they did a great job in presenting the work their child had done with their parent, keeping it positive, you know, showing the positives, stressing some of the needs, and they were, it was very good. Some parent news, on November 8th, I held the November Volunteer Training. So I've done one every month of the fall so far. I would say we're pushing upwards of 100 people so far that have been trained. I've got some more names to give to Superintendent Higgins soon. I have been invited on November 28th to attend the local Rotary Meeting for that purpose. There's evidently a lot of Rotary members that would like to have the volunteer training so they can come in and do some things with our students, which I think is wonderful. So I'm going to do that in their facility and just do the training there at a meeting, which they've invited me to attend, so I'm excited for that. I've scheduled December's group meeting for December 7th at 6:00 PM, and that'll be my last group training that I'll do until the spring. Certainly, if there's an issue that comes up between December and the spring where any individual needs the training, I'm certainly not going to say no. You know, I'll always say yes, and just find a time to meet with them individually and take care of that. Group meetings are what I prefer to do, but I'll do another group meeting in the spring. Mr. Newitt mentioned the school photo retakes. The date that he gave you is for the middle school. It's a completely different date for the elementary school. So elementary photo retakes, for parents to know that are listening on the television, is November 17th. November 17th for the elementary students. And just wanted to remind parents, we had our November PTF meeting tonight, but December's meeting is scheduled for, again, it's always the second Tuesday, will be December 12th from 3:00 to 4:00 PM. And I also want to give a thank you to Tina Young, one of our Title I teachers, and also to the Ellsworth Masons of Lagone Lodge Number 40. I'm not sure how long this has been going, maybe Mrs. Thomas? It's the third year. We do what's called a Vacation Reading Challenge. So if you take all the vacations over a school year, the longer vacations, not the three-day ones, but like Thanksgiving week, Christmas week, February and April, I believe it's those four. We do a reading challenge for kids to keep reading over that week's vacation. And through some paperwork that parents sign, if your child completes the reading challenge for that week, they can put their name in a bucket. So where there's four weeks of vacation, if a child participates all four times, then they can have their name in the bucket four times. If they choose to just do it over one of those weeks, then their name goes in once. And what we do is at the end of the school year, we have an end-of-school-year assembly, and the lodge donates 10 bicycles, a boy's bicycle and a girl's bicycle, so two bicycles per grade level, K through 4. And we have a drawing, and those that participated in the reading challenge have an opportunity to win a bicycle. So it's a big event. Kids look forward to it every year, and we couldn't do it without the huge generosity of the Lagone Lodge or the Masons here in Ellsworth. So just wanted to thank them for doing that again this year, and just wanted to notify parents that with the upcoming Thanksgiving vacation, our first reading challenge is just about upon us. So that's coming. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bowles.
Good evening. Amy Bowles from Hancock County Technical Center. This Friday, we'll have about 60 students that will head to Augusta for the ABC Craft Championships. Most of the students come from Diesel Technology, Carpentry, Automotive Technology, Marine and Welding. Students get the opportunity to meet with employees from around the state in those industries, get to try out different types of equipment, and interview on the spot with employers and ask questions. Thank you to Andrew Trowbridge, who annually arranges us for our kids to go. Also with Andrew's program, Diesel Technology, he has formalized a partnership with John Deere. John Deere's always been very good to us. But this year, we've added a new component where they have different employees coming in and being guest lecturers. And their first lecturer was last week and was on emissions of heavy equipment. So it's always nice to have kids meeting the standards and hearing those things from an employer rather than just always the instructor. So we thank them for that. Our Health Occupations Program, we've had a lot of wonderful things happen in that program over the last couple of weeks. First and foremost, we have finally, after a few years, finally been able to formalize a dual enrollment agreement with Eastern Maine Community College for medical terminology. So our seniors in our program can now be duly enrolled at Eastern Maine Community College and with us, and receive three credits for their medical terminology portion of our program. A lot of our bridge year students annually are in our Health Occupations Program, so for those kids, it's a wonderful opportunity to stack more credits on top of what they're already getting through bridge year. Eastern Maine Healthcare Systems will be coming in on November 28th to meet with the AM and the PM students. As you know, there's a crisis of workers in the healthcare field across the state, and so they're trying to hit the road and recruit kids at these ages and get them to understand that the CNA is a wonderful career but can also be a beginning and a launchpad into other healthcare careers where there are severe shortages. So they're coming in, and we'll speak with kids about the different opportunities they have in that. Finally, we're excited. Every year, students apply to nursing programs, PT programs, OT programs, all over the state and nationally, and they're very, very competitive. And we were excited that this year, for the first time, we have a student who's been accepted directly into the physical therapy program at Hassan University, which is very rare. Usually, kids have to go in as freshmen and be undeclared, or major in something else and then transfer in, and she's been accepted outright, and that's our own Ellsworth High School's Hannah Sargent, who is doing our medical program and is a bridge year student. So we're very excited and proud of her. Our biomedical science program, once again, had the opportunity to go to Jackson Lab, so we want to thank them again publicly. Our students this time were able to tour the sequencing facility, the Sanger Sequencing Facility there. Not only did they get to do a tour, but they got to also participate in a lecture around sequencing and did an actual activity with scientists there, doing sequencing of their own DNA, so they were very excited about that. And at the last school board meeting, I mentioned that we were working on a partnership to have some of our students start more formalized internships, and we have four students who have been accepted. We're very excited, three of which are from Ellsworth High School, one from Bucksport High School, who's also a bridge year student with us at Ellsworth. And those Ellsworth High School seniors are Michael Mutlu, Emmett Smith, and Chelsea Lounder, and Shaili Bridges from Bucksport High School. They will be working on their own research projects and mentored by a scientist there. They'll be going to Jaxx once a week for the year, and then this spring, they'll be presenting their science research experiments at the Jackson Lab Auditorium. So that's a very exciting opportunity for them. We have been working hard on accreditation. As you know, we're up for accreditation in January, and our reports are due December 1st. So we'll be spending our professional development days the week of Thanksgiving, working on those and finalizing those. Finally, we have six students who will be honored by the University of Maine for their outstanding academic achievement in the bridge year program. They do this once a year in the fall, where they honor outstanding seniors from around the state who are performing at an exemplary level in bridge year and in their CTE program. Our six seniors this year are all from Ellsworth High School. They are Lindsay Bland, Christian Bossy, Isaiah Kuchal, Delaney Dow, Sam Horn, and Hannah Sargent. So we're very excited and proud of them. The banquet will be in Augusta on Saturday, December 9th. Finally, just a couple of quick announcements. Our parent-teacher conferences are tomorrow evening. We actually have our most parents signed up that we've ever had, which is exciting for us. We are closed next week, as our, so no sending high schools, we'll be sending students to us next week. And finally, December 20th is our huge holiday buffet. So we always get that on people's calendars for the gingerbread houses as well as the buffet. And our restaurant is closed tomorrow due to the VFW Thanksgiving preparation. Every year, we cook the entire Thanksgiving dinner that the VFW puts out to veterans Thanksgiving week. And finally, December 20th is our huge holiday buffet. So, we always get that on people's calendars for the gingerbread houses as well as the buffet. And our restaurant is closed tomorrow due to the VFW Thanksgiving preparation. Every year, we cook the entire Thanksgiving dinner that the VFW puts out to veterans Thanksgiving week. So, they are inundated with their thirty turkeys and all of the fixings that go with that right now. So, we will be closed tomorrow at Brookside. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Ms. Sargent. Our program is pretty small and usually every month, I can come up with things to report, exciting new things to report. But this year, I'm, we're just sort of in gear. We're, our students, our seasonal students are starting to come out of the woodwork. We get a group of students that come in when school starts and then we get a lot of seasonal workers who are coming in the door now, so that's exciting. So, now's a really good time for folks to come in and get started so that they can hit the ground running after the first of the year, although our classes right now are open enrollment. So, we encourage people to come see us. And our spring 2018 planning is well underway. We have, we have a lot of the tried and true classes set up and then we have some new ones. One, I just spoke to the Acadia National Park and they're gonna do a workshop about their job opportunities. Like, like many employers, they're having trouble finding qualified workers. And so, that's an organization that I think a lot of people might be interested in working for because they have some great opportunities. So, they're gonna give a workshop. We have just talked, yes, or today finalized a workshop on home buyer, home buying. So, diverse offerings in addition to the art classes and so on. So, we're pretty excited about that. We are desperately looking for somebody to teach digital photography. We could fill a digital photography class over and over again. And we need to find somebody. So, if anybody knows of anybody who would like to teach that class, we would love to have them. We've also had some requests for like basic plumbing, like, like little things that homeowners can do in terms of plumbing and also home wiring. So, those are, those are some courses that I'm trying to find somebody to teach. Our office skills and CNA programs, I don't know if people are following the news around the federal funding that is, has been, was offered to the state of Maine that was turned away. But that funding is for job training money that funds CNA pro, our CNA program and other programming. So, we're not sure what the impact of that is gonna be. We're sort of hoping that folks will try to work that out so, so that that training, those training dollars can flow. We do every year when we have our CNA programs, we have some people who pay on their own and some that are funded with federal training dollars. So, I think we may not have as full a class as we've had in the past this year, but we're hoping that we'll be able to run those programs as usual. The other thing that's not on my report, but I have, I'm gonna be meeting, there's a new recovery program in the Mill Mall called Groups. They're actually in the location where we used to be. And I'm meeting with every one of those groups over the next two weeks to talk about our programming. And I just visited the first group today and it was a very positive experience. So, there's nothing that I like better, as those of you who know me know, than giving people a new start in their life. And those folks are often very much ready for that, so, so that's exciting. And a lot of the work that we've been doing is sort of behind the scenes. I was trying to think about how to articulate this in a way that you would understand it, but we have, I'm just gonna say this because I'm very, I wanna shout out to Marilyn Starling, who, we had a report due last, this, it's actually due this week. We submitted, we, I prepared it last week and it has to do with a data match, with getting sign-ups for social security numbers. It's not that important specifically what it is. But we needed to have an eighty percent, the state goal was an eighty percent match. And last week, we were at thirty-seven percent and today I redid the report and we were at eighty-eight percent. And that is, that's the kind of work that we've been doing a lot of this year. As we, the first couple of years, we were really starting up and now we're sort of building that foundation a little bit deeper. So, it's not a lot of sort of fun stuff to report, but it's important work that I appreciate all of our staff participating in. Does anybody have any questions about our programming? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Yeah, right, it's got my cardio in, right? All right, good evening. I wanted to start by talking about our Title I programs. The Title I After-School Program is going strong. It is running Monday through Thursday each week from 2:30 to 5:00. The program is very popular. We have more students than ever. We currently have eighteen students in the first and second grade program and fifteen in the third through fifth grade program. Each week, we have, each month, rather, during a staff meeting, we have an enrichment program. And this past, two weeks ago, we had Michelle Lahey from Yoga Seeds, who taught our students yoga as an enrichment activity and they had a great time doing that. We've actually had Nicole do improv with us in the past and she'll continue to do that as well. On October 30th, I completed the submission of audit materials to the Department of Education, reviewing our Title I and II programs in Ellsworth. I'd like to thank our veteran Title I staff, Kelly Rudolph and Tina Young, as well as our former interventionists, Aurora Stickel and Kelly Benetstein, and our new members, Jessica Freeman and Wymer Perry, for their really careful and caring work over the years and work done this year as we've added new interventions and assessments to really understand where children are and how they're reading and where their challenges are. We spent a lot of time over the past year adding in phonemic awareness and phonics assessments that hadn't been done in the past to really understand where students are. But it was through doing this audit that I was reminded in a, in a very detailed way about the importance of this work and the dedication of our staff. They created a binder for me as we looked through all of our compliance documentation. About six months ago, we started seeing this coming. There's been a lot of review in the district. We have accreditation in HCTC and audits in Title I and site reviews and special ed. And we saw this kind of coming and asked the Title I folks to start pulling together the pieces. And often, when you do these audits, you find there's things that, oh, we didn't really know we had to do that. We'll do that next time and we'll apologize, that kind of thing. But when they handed me the binder so that I could start putting it all together, I was really reminded of how well-done this program is and has been running for so long. And I just, I really wanted to, I, I wanted to underline how impressive the meticulous documentation was. They had carefully laid plans out. We've created new plans for the future. I was able to really show the DOE just how good the program was with the, with how careful they've been. And so, I've just been really impressed and I'm just additionally impressed by the documentation. So, much of it is about sending letters home to parents and explaining to parents how their children are doing and follow-up appointments and parent involvement nights and stacks and stacks and stacks of material that they send out through the year, through the entire year about how parents can walk through grocery stores and point out, you know, and point out print and help kids learn to read. And they, they had so much that I was just so impressed at the relationships they formed with their students and, and how careful and thoughtful they've been in developing those relationships. So, we should be very, very lucky and understand how fortunate it is that we have such a strong Title I program for our students. With our continuing professional development, on October 16th, Mark Hastings, our Go Math facilitator, spent the day with our teachers to support their learning in the new math resources. Twenty teachers worked with him in grade-specific small groups to further learn the program and explore the intervention and enrichment materials in particular. He and his colleague will now return next Tuesday for the second of our PD days to work with groups based on their common needs. On the first day of those November days next Monday, the entire faculty will attend a presentation by Peg Dawson, who is a clinical psychologist who's nationally known. She's the author of a book called Executive Skills of Children and Adolescents. As we have started, you know, marking, recognizing students for their habits of work, it's really looking at executive functioning and how kids, you know, put their lives together and organize themselves and get ready for assignments and bring things home and, and don't bring things home and that kind of thing. And so, we feel that it's very important, since we are recognizing them for that, to make sure that we are all thinking about explicitly teaching those skills because there are a lot of families that don't or aren't able to or haven't learned them themselves and, or aren't even aware that there's things to teach. There's a lot of different kinds of environments in which we're not even aware that there's things that maybe we learned back in the day that we haven't incorporated as school changes and as there's been more computers. There's new kinds of executive skills to learn. So, we're gonna have Peg Dawson come in. I have been really pleased to work with Adam Rabasca, who is the Special Ed Director of Hancock and Lemoine, who was able to bring her here. And he and I have coordinated so that we are able to provide the venue of the high school auditorium, thanks to Mr. Clifford, for the workshop. And so, we'll be having Hancock County teachers coming together for this workshop on Monday. So, we're very fortunate to be able to attend the sessions. Our teachers will be able to spend half the day with them and the special ed teachers and ed techs will spend the whole day with her. So, we're really looking forward to the information that we can bring in. The remainder of those two days, the teachers will be able to leverage their time to plan collaboratively and move forward with jump rope and the new math resources. And finally, just to kind of underline, along with what you'll learn in a minute, I did want to just bring out a couple of things about how exciting our community arts curriculum has been. And you'll learn some more details about it, but just one kind of anecdote. Last month, the junior class at the high school worked with Nicole on exploring the script and themes of Our Town by Thornton Wilder. And I had gone to the high school teachers, the English teachers, and talked to them about if there was ways in which we could incorporate the themes of the show with what they were working on. And as luck would have it, they were working on a theme of the American Dream. And the teachers were just exceptionally flexible and switched out some of the texts they had planned and actually studied Our Town ahead of time before the kids would be able to come to the show. We were able to find some money in the local budget to be able to take the kids to the show. And then they worked with Nicole to talk about ways in which she could integrate what she was doing with what they were reading in class. And it was, it was really exciting because one of the people who was in the show is what, and is a mentor to the kids in a lot of different ways and has worked in the theater department in Ellsworth, saw the kids afterwards and was talking to them in a different environment. She said she'd never seen them so engaged in going out to theater. And she said that she could tell by the way they were talking about it, that it would, the difference was that they had been, that they had prepared and they had talked about it and they had actually been actors themselves before they were able to actually see the show. And so, they had really like lit a spark. So, it was very exciting. They got the experience of seeing the theater, but they also got the experience of learning improvisational theater in the classroom. I really want to thank Abigail Cuvaya, Melanie Ruark, Jennifer Bernhardt and other members of the English Department who changed their lesson plans to incorporate the play into their teachings. But also, what was so fun for me is I was, I was, I was kind of in the background watching a couple of Nicole's workshops and it was so neat to see that students were stepping out of their comfort zones and their social circles. You had kids who had their, you know, athletic sweatshirts on and kids who were, you know, were identifying themselves as theater people and music people and art kids and they were all of a sudden volunteering to jump in the middle of the circle and do improvisational pieces together. And you could tell that they weren't people who necessarily walked down the halls together. So, it was very exciting to see them all interact and get excited about something they were about to see. So, it is, it's the heart of things that I love to watch and it's really fun to know that it's happening in Ellsworth now. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Rachel. Mr. Higgins.
Good evening, members of the board, audience and the television audience. I'd like to start off by congratulating Mrs. Thomas, Mr. Hudson on your reelection and your election to the board.
Thank you very much.
So, welcome back, Mrs. Thomas and welcome to the board.
Thank you.
You have my written report, but one thing that's not included on it, I participated this afternoon in an exit interview with Representatives in the Department of Education and Food Services Director Ray Daly. As you know, there's been a food service program review taking place over the past week or so. And the exit interview revealed that the Department of Ed has determined that our food service program is an excellent program and operating on all cylinders. There'll be a few minor findings in there, but they had nothing but praise for Mr. Daly and his staff. They were also complimentary of our wellness program and wellness policy. So, just to give Ray and his staff a little bit of recognition. Would like to take a couple of minutes to talk on the topic of bullying. If you've been watching the news reports, in particular, Channel 2 over the past couple of weeks, you've seen some reports about bullying. In particular, an inference that schools in Maine are not doing enough to respond to and address bullying activities in the schools. As we all know, bullying is pervasive and efforts to address bullying, harassing and hazing behaviors have been a priority in the state of Maine. For the past several years, bullying policies and laws have been changed to give schools a little more guidance and direction on how to respond to bullying. So, I want to take a couple of minutes tonight to talk a little bit about what we do here in the Ellsworth School Department, not just to comply with the statutory requirements, but also some other pieces that are done in a proactive fashion to assure our citizens and you as a school board and our parents and students that we take bullying allegations seriously and, and we don't tolerate that type of behavior in our schools. First and foremost, one of the things that we have done and you have passed a policy that's consistent with state law that requires a follow-up, an investigation on any report of bullying that is brought forth to our schools, either from students, from parents, observations by staff, even anonymous. In fact, we have on our school website, a spot on each of our school links where people can report bullying directly to the website. Along with that policy, our administrators are required to follow-up and interview students who are the alleged victims, alleged perpetrators, get to the bottom of whether or not the behavior is actually bullying. And whether it is bullying or not, if it is a substantiated case of bullying, we need to take steps to address it. In some of those cases, it may be disciplinary action. If it's a case where it's not a substantiated case of bullying, and what I mean by substantiated case is meeting a definition and policy and law, it may not be bullying, but it still may be inappropriate behavior. We need to address that behavior as well. The other piece that the law requires and our policy requires is that we communicate with the parents of both the alleged victim and the alleged perpetrator. We found that that has been beneficial in addressing and putting a stop to some of those behaviors. Another piece is, all of our staff in the Ellsworth School Department participate in a mandated annual training on bullying. We have a program called Target Solutions that we get through Maine School Management Association, where we do all of our annual trainings. So, for those of you who did annual trainings in past years, it's done in a much more efficient way now, but bullying is one of those that's done every single year. Now, in addition to those pieces, just want to read through quickly a list of things that are done in each of our schools that address either bullying or appropriate or inappropriate behaviors. At Ellsworth Elementary School, teachers teach the Six Simple Word Program and recognize students with clothespins that are put up in the hall and read over announcements and these students are recognized at a monthly assembly. Our Guidance Counselor at the school teaches social skills, kindness, empathy and compassion at the elementary classrooms. Teachers work the entire first month in developing classroom communities, classroom rules, and they refer back to this work frequently, if not daily, through the remainder of the year and they emphasize appropriate behaviors. Teachers also take advantage of teachable moments throughout the building in several areas, classrooms, cafeteria, the halls and the playground. The results were a form used called Think About It at the elementary school that teachers who have students who broke a rule, fill it out and it goes home to parents and comes back. So, there's certainly a reinforcement of appropriate behaviors at the elementary level. At the middle school, we have an acceptable use policy, excuse me, an acceptable use policy for our computers. It's reviewed with students at the opening day assembly and students are required to sign off on the policy. And one of the reasons that's important is it includes a topic of cyberbullying, which is another pervasive area of bullying that takes place. Homeroom teachers also review the PBIS or Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports Matrix every fall with our students. While it doesn't deal directly with bullying, it does deal with behavioral expectations in school. And when you're looking at the type of behavior that we expect from students, it's the opposite of bullying. The bullying policy is referenced in the EMS Handbook with a link to the policy itself and that's included in all of the handbooks. Handbook also includes verbiage directly from the policy, so it's very clear to students and parents who see that handbook what bullying behavior is and how reports of bullying will be addressed by the policy. In grade five, we have students who take part in a ten-week, ten-week DARE program, which has a focus on bullying awareness, education and prevention. All homerooms receive five lessons from our Guidance Counselor who deal directly with and indirectly in addressing bullying, peer relationships, communication, conflict resolution. Our athletic director meets with coaches and met with winter coaches last week and reviewed the hazing and bullying policies with them. Eighth graders also view a How To Be Positive Citizens, Citizens video at the start, excuse me, Citizens video at the start of the Video at the start of the year, so students know what's expected in terms of behavior. Also, at the middle school health class, students in grade six health deal with bullying and violence prevention unit. Students in grade seven health class receive instruction in harassment and bullying in the social and emotional health unit. And another seventh grade unit deals with cyberbullying. And an eighth grade health class deals with harassment, hate crimes, and terrorism. At Ellsworth High School, on the first day of school, with the Assistant Principal and the Athletic Administrator, they introduce and go over in detail the bullying policy with our student body, and that's all four classes. Sports informational meetings with our Athletic Director, hazing policy is reviewed and covered. There are also a number of programs in place at Ellsworth High School that are designed to maintain an awareness of our students' academic and social and emotional well-being. There's teaming at ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grades. The teams meet three to four days a week. The teacher is assigned to work and follow each student, and progress is followed academically, socially, emotionally, each week of the school year. There's also a risk review team, which includes a principal, Assistant Principal, Athletic Director, school nurse, social worker, Resource Officer, and two Guidance Counselors. And what that risk review team does is looks for students who are at risk of dropping out. Students are recommended by teams for support. Students are assigned to a team member, and a team member meets with them once a week to check on them academically and socially and emotionally. As part of the Building Assets Reducing Risks Program that was implemented last year, all ninth grade students participated in the lesson on bullying and related topics. Last school year, a former student from, I believe, Bucksport, Mr. Clifford, correct me if I'm wrong, Dylan Soper, who was a high school graduate now in the Army, told this story of bullying a student that ended up in death, and it was very impactful on our students. Also, in 2015-16, Dom Kalizi, who's a singer and songwriter from Nashville, Tennessee, told this story of being a victim of bullying, and he has come back from that and has become a recorded country artist. At HCTC, they conduct whole school assemblies with the first year and second year students, including a discussion about bullying. Staff also review the handbook and discuss with students that there are a variety of ways to report bullying behaviors. The other piece that HCTC does that helps to minimize instances where behavior could escalate to bullying is they use a restorative justice practice, so that there were conflicts with students that worked out in a positive and proactive fashion. And these are just examples of what's being done in our schools to ensure that regardless of what may be reported anywhere, we do take bullying very seriously in our schools, and our administrators and staff members work very hard to ensure that students are not being bullied, and the students are acting and behaving appropriately. The next two items I'd like to kind of address together. As Mr. McCluskey mentioned, Commissioner Hassan was at Ellsworth Elementary Middle School last week. He came to the middle school a few minutes late because he was meeting with the Hancock County Superintendent Thursday morning. His meeting with us was part of a tour of Maine that he's doing, and visiting all the superintendent regions in the state, where he talks about his agenda and a discussion of current initiatives in the state. I'll talk about the topics here in a second, but it was very refreshing to meet with the Commissioner, because even though he certainly has a role as the Commissioner, there are initiatives that he is required to advance and support. He made it very clear that he's willing to reach out and work with districts in the field to address any issues that we find in moving forward on initiatives, but also to support us in being successful in doing that. I'll get to the topics in a second. The second piece was, last evening, Hancock County Superintendents and Board Leadership from all of Hancock County School Boards had an opportunity to meet with Hancock County legislators. We were very fortunate that Senator Brian Langley of Ellsworth, who happens to be a co-chair of the Education Committee at the legislative level, and Representative Brian Hubbell of Bar Harbor were in attendance. We discussed a number of topics of interest to superintendents and school boards, many of which you as a board have discussed in workshops and here at this table. And they were the same types of topics that were discussed when the superintendents met with the Commissioner. Topics discussed were regionalization efforts supported by the Department of Ed, which includes school management and leadership centers, which we'll talk about a little bit later this evening, embrace grants, and what's known as a FEDIS grant, which is an opportunity to partner with a municipality, the proposed transition of Child Development Services Ages Three Through Five Programs into Maine's public schools, proposed expansion of career and technical education programming to middle school students, and changes to the CTE funding formula, current Chapter 134 rules revisions, which are the rules around high school graduation, the multiple changes in the new essential programs and services funding model, and there are well over a dozen changes that we know are in there, but we don't know what the impact is going to be yet, efforts around mental health issues facing students, special education costs, certification and evaluation, and the ongoing discussion of the importance of an appropriate balance of state oversight of education but local control. You know, both meetings I would characterize as very positive, you know, the Commissioner is reaching out to hopefully support school departments moving forward, and certainly with Senator Langley and Representative Hubbell, we have a couple of veteran legislators who have the best interest of the education of children at heart and in their work, and they are very committed to working with us to, in the words of one of them, overcome any of the barriers that exist, in particular around regionalization efforts, to help us to be successful. I'd like to report one new staff member. Mr. Daly has brought on Wanda Fleming, who will be working at the high school in the Food Services Department. Two letters of resignation that we had, one is Ed Pierpont from our Instructional Technology Department, and Jennifer Beal, a grade seven teacher at EMS. And to close tonight, I don't want to hasten the arrival of winter weather, but do want to remind parents of our notification system for school closures and delayed openings. We will continue to use the Infinite Campus System to communicate closures and delays, and that's by phone, email, or text. And for people who like to get those announcements on the broadcast media, notification will also appear on television stations WLZZ and WABI, Star 97.7 FM Radio WNSX here in Ellsworth, WZON Radio in Bangor, and all of the Town Square Media Stations. And that concludes my report unless you have any questions.
Thank you. Okay. Item H, committee reports. I believe you're going to report later on policy?
I can report later on policy, sure.
Okay. Any other committee reports? Item I, old business, we have none. Item J, staff presentation.
And this is not necessarily a staff presentation, although it's a staff collaboration presentation. You've referenced in a couple of reports, Nick Turner, new Executive Director at the Grand, Outreach Coordinator, Nicole Cardano are here this evening to present and talk a little bit about how the school and the Grand are.
Because Ellsworth wants my face on a television again. They demanded it.
Haven't we had enough of that, Nick?
I guess.
Ever, ever.
I keep saying to everybody, I'm really sick of myself. I don't want you to get sick of me. Don't get sick of me. I'm like a good coffee.
You just want more.
I'll talk while they're setting things up. Such wonderful things I heard tonight, and it reminded me that this time last year, the Search Committee first contacted me about an upcoming interview for this position in Ellsworth, including checking my references, and so I had to call them ahead of time to make sure they said the right things. But no, it was this time of year when we were talking about that, and then I came for my interview. But in the Search Committee questions, they asked me what I thought was the most important thing that I could bring to the Grand, or the most important thing for the Grand and the community, and I said without hesitation, it was education. My background is in education and arts, and I come from a family of teachers, generations of teachers. I was a public school teacher. And then, my wife and I was an actress, decided to go full-blown into theater, but I continued to be a theater arts teacher throughout the years, and I knew that that was an extremely important position at a, for an organization, especially like Grand being so central to downtown, and so much a part of the community. And I came for my interview. And a strikingly handsome man with wonderful intelligence took me on a tour of the area. He's sitting among you, and he took me to two places. He took me to the middle school, he took the elementary and middle school, he took me to the school for a tour, and he took me to the YMCA. And I think that was the two most perfect places to take me besides Finn's for lunch with other people, or to flex it, which I had coffee and met another person. Anyway, I'm getting distracted. And I was struck by the amazing quality of just the way the school looked. Now, this is gonna be sound weird, and I don't want to get too distracted, but my background in food service, and my background in facilities, including owning a theater, I was immensely struck at how clean the school was. So, kudos to your janitorial staff. I mean, spotless. We took a long walk, and that means a lot to me. And that means a lot to me in any facility I go to, by the way. And then, we moved here. And my wife, my daughter went to the school, I have a third grader, she's eight years old, and she came home, and rest assured, this is a blessing or a curse, we're not going anywhere, because she loves the school. She loves her teacher, and she loves the school, and she loves the kids, she loves the community, and that was probably the most important thing to solidify our presence here. Besides the Grand's place in the community, and my opportunity to bring arts and education together. So, the next thing I did, the first thing I did was connect with the arts and theater departments within the school district. That was extremely important. I'm happy to say that that is a strong partnership. I'm blown away by the fact you brought up the bully thing today. That's always been something very key at the top of my mind. I was a little guy with a big mouth, as you can well imagine. So, bullying and I go way back. And it was not as the instigator, it was the other person. But I'm pleased to report to the board that hopefully very soon, I've started conversations with another strong organization in the community. We're on fire about this idea, it's so new, I really don't want to go into it too far, but theater and the arts serve a wonderful role. At its best, it reminds us who we are, and that we're all human together, and we all exist together, and we can do great things together, and we can get along, and we can make brilliant things happen. So, we started a conversation about what can we do together to really address the bullying. So, we're gonna hopefully have something very soon, or before next fall, to present to everyone, where we can maybe be a very vital part of that discussion. We're very excited about that. But, right now, we have the PAC program, which is absolutely wonderful. I met Nicole very early on. David Cattigan introduced us. I knew the minute I met her, that she was the one to spearhead outreach into the school system. We both agreed that it had to be curriculum-driven. I've done tons of professional development and curriculum work in Colorado before I came here. That was one of the strongest things that I was doing at the time, that I think made me attractive for the Grand. I met Jasmine Ireland, and pretty much hired her over coffee, knowing that she was the person with the vision of working extremely hard in the arts, and the value of it, and her work with young people, and I just know I have two wonderful people as a part of that. Besides meeting all of you, and knowing that this is a perfect place to really pursue those things. Nicole has been out in the school district, and been to the classrooms, and I'm gonna let her talk to you a little bit about that. I believe Alice is our third one now, right? We did Frankenstein with a traveling theater group that was absolutely wonderful. Kids came to Our Town, which is an absolutely wonderful experience with young people, and then Alice this Friday, and many others to follow. Nicole?
Sure. Yeah, I'll hop in on that one, sure. Pleasure to be here, and it's really fun to be able to integrate theater arts with the curriculum. Yeah, that's okay, there's just some, there's some photos that we pulled together, that's all it is. So, thank you for trying so hard. We much appreciate it. Yeah, they'll be photos. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yeah, so, yeah, I met Nick through the Maine Arts Commission, I'm a Teaching Artist Leader with the Maine Arts Commission, and do a lot of different outreach programs in the schools. And we recognized that this was a wonderful opportunity to bring the Grand and the schools closer together, and get some theater integration into the classroom. So, as he kind of hit upon, it's just been the three so far, but the plan is that we're gonna get all the students into the Grand, and also myself into the classroom, connecting the curriculum with the show that they're gonna come see. So, just to give you a little more information on what happened in my time in the classroom, on September 26th, I met with all of the eighth graders. We broke them up into two class groups, so basically forty-four and forty-four, and I led different theater improv class, or exercises with them, and that was in connection to their Edgar Allan Poe studies. So, we were looking at Gothic Romantic writing, as well as modern science, because Mary Shelley's Frankenstein really depicts the modern science of the early 1800s, and takes the, something happening here. It takes the discovery electricity and the experimentation of the time, and puts it into what was the first science fiction novel. And it also ties in the fact that women were not able to go to college at that time, that Mary Shelley took that book upon herself in her own studies of education. And it was actually a challenge to who could write the scariest story out of a group of writers, and hers is the one that rose. And so, the teachers were wonderful. It was, let me see, it was Kirsten Jester and Lori Johnston, who I initially met with, and it was their ELA classrooms that I came in and did the improv exercises. But I put that little seed in about science, and the science teachers brought me in, and I did a thirty-minute talk to the entire eighth grade class on the modern science of that time in connection to the story, and then also how we're still working with some of that science today, like the defibrillators are actually connected to the science that Mary Shelley based this book upon. So, the next one then was Our Town, which October 24th, and so we've been touched upon a little bit here, was the ELA juniors and AP junior/senior, very much focused on the American Dream, and also, the teachers really wanted me to work on confidence and presentation skills with the students. And I gave them a lot of high-functioning things, because I knew I was dealing with some high-functioning students, and they responded with some real enthusiasm, so it was very exciting to see. And then, today. Today, I was, I had seven classes today. Five third-grade classes and two second-grade classes, with Alice Down the Rabbit Hole. So, they'll all come see that on Friday, and I will return and complete the second-grade class on Thursday. And in that, we really focused on character traits, on the characters that they're gonna see in the story, and aspects of that, as well as the structure of a story, the beginning, middle, and end. Different games kind of popped out through all of those, but really, some growthful work for everybody. Yeah, so, thank you.
Do you have any questions for us?
No, I just think this is so much better than years ago, when we used to get the little book saying, this is what you're going to see, and you as a teacher were trying to create something that.
Sure.
So, this is, you know.
We appreciate that, yeah, definitely.
It's nice to have somebody that knows what they're doing, as opposed to the teacher who never took a theater class, trying to instill some of the information to the children. So, I think this is wonderful.
Thank you. We're working towards that. Much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Our future goals on that, sorry, you heard it. The future goals on that is to work even before we pick the shows. That'd be wonderful. We can really find the shows that fit key curriculum elements, or create them, like the Bully, Anti-Bullying Project. I think the Grand would be a wonderful, have the wonderful opportunity to create stuff.
Can I just note that Alice Down the Rabbit Hole, which you were just talking about, you're doing it for the students Friday morning?
This Friday, yes.
And then, there'll be public performances. You need to mention that.
Yes, public performances, so it's Saturday.
Friday night and Saturday night.
And there's a Sunday by May.
Sunday afternoon.
So, the public can go see, go to the Grand this weekend, Friday night, Saturday night, seven PM, right?
Yes.
And Sunday at two.
Get your tickets at.
You can get your tickets online, or online at.
Or online at grandaline.org.
That's right.
Thank you so much.
They're a team.
And it's our own creation, so it's even more fun, it's never been seen before, and it's a collaboration with NLDA, so Nerdalikes Dance Arts and Shelby Warner's Dancers are on the show. It's basically a play with original music, written by Mark Tipton, the local jazz artist. So, it's very, again, very community-driven. A dance group, local actors, the schools, jazz musicians, it's great.
And who wrote the play?
I did.
Right. And then, our upcoming production of It's a Wonderful Life is coming, and that will also target working with the students on the folly of sound effects. It's a radio play performance, in which we have a performer here, I believe, right, Tim? You're in this performance. So, even more tie-in between the school and what's happening.
One thing I wanted to add, the value that's.
One thing I wanted to add, the value that's added to this as well, is that in the past, kids have gone to, you know, the cafeteria at the school and seen performances that came in that, like you said, didn't have a connection to necessarily. One of the additional values to this program is that I was in, for instance, I was in a class today, watching Nicole work with the kids. And even though the teachers couldn't use it as an opportunity to, you know, do other things, they were really engaged themselves. I had even said to one of the teachers... Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, yeah, we're talking with the audience.
Yeah, I'm sorry. But this is important to anyone.
I had even said to one of the teachers that they were welcome to work on other things and she said, I don't want to miss this. And it was, they were using it as an opportunity to learn how to work with the kids. Because a couple of them, I heard them talking out in the hall after they had worked on it, had said, I can do that with my kids. Now, when I work on this next book and we're doing characters, I can use that idea that I saw Nicole do and I can do that with the kids. So it is also adding a piece of professional development. The teachers are being able to bring it down the line. I do want to mention that one of the reasons that we were able to do this is because the PTF at EEMS agreed to take the funds that they had been spending on the shows coming to the cafeteria and be able to send every child to the GRAND this year. So we really want to thank them. We had a meeting with Tim and Miranda Lambert and myself this summer and we talked to her about that and she took it with the PTF and talked about it quite a bit. And so we do want to thank them for taking that leap of faith and not really knowing what it would look like. But because they were able to talk about an initial investment in the program, we were able to launch it and then find funds for the high school. So we do want to thank them for thinking out of the box and trying something new, because I think it's adding a lot of different pieces to the school.
The initial, the initial partnership with the GRAND started with the students going to the GRAND. And then became more of programming coming to the, to the schools. And that piece of going to the GRAND is very, very important. And as a teacher who took students to the GRAND the first time, just watching their behavior, audience behavior, learning how to be part of an audience, the first time was quite an experience. So, so I can appreciate all this.
Well, I just did a presentation here, Tim. I just did a presentation with the Stanley Subaru. What intrigues me about this area that I love so much is one of the salesmen saw his first play, Fourth Grade, at the GRAND. And he was part of the Elsro School District. So that is, it's just really important. And Rachel has been a key in all this. If I don't, if we hadn't have met Rachel and connected with that, meeting you early on encouraged me to continue. And then to have someone within, you know, in the day-to-day and the curriculum and things and connecting it. I think it's just a great, it's a great partnership and we'll keep it going. But I'll depend on you guys.
It's one of those things that makes you like to get up in the morning, even if you know you have to deal with budgets and things, like office stuff. You think about some of those and watch the kids come to the theater and it really does give you a spark, so it's very exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item J two, first read of policies.
Do you want me to start?
Yeah.
Okay. So the policy committee met on November first and we continued our three-year review of policies. We took on Section B this time. And Section B, it basically talks about how the board is organized and how the board operates. We have four policies tonight for the board to consider for a first read. Do you want to take them one at a time?
Yes, please.
Okay. We have IJ O A. This is a policy of field trips. And the process that we've been using for years is the same process that's going to continue, which is now we have it formalized in the form of a policy. AEC, Accountability Reporting to the Public. This policy directs a superintendent to prepare and provide reports to the board and when appropriate, to the public. Those reports may include the district annual report, district report cards, financial reports, and other reports that relate to school goals and operations. Policy BCB, Conflict of Interest with the School Board. That's pretty self-explanatory. We on the board are not to the school employees or do anything on the board that is self-serving. Policy BBDA. This is School Board Declared Vacancy. It outlines how a seat is declared vacant and what happens when the seat is vacant and the expectations of board members when it comes to meeting attendance. And BDG, Attorney Legal Services. This allows, the board provides a superintendent the authority to designate legal counsel for the school district. And I think I covered them all.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you need a motion for each one individually?
Yeah, I think we do need for each one.
I would.
All right. I move that we approve first read of policy IJ O A, Field Trips and Other Student Travels as recommended by the policy committee.
Second. Discussion?
Yeah, just that this policy is is a new policy. The school department has had processes by which field trips and excursions have taken place, but there's no formal policy in place. So you're doing a first read of this policy. The other piece the policy committee has asked administration to do is, is to take all the various forms that are used in different schools, consolidate them into one uniform set of forms that can be used across the schools. Those are not included with your packet, this is just the policy language.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Five oh.
I move to approve the first read of amended policy AEC, Accountability Reporting to the Public as recommended by the policy committee.
Second. Discussion?
This is an existing policy. This is coming forward for a first read and a second read because there is one recommended amendment, it's in Section C. This is with financial reports and you talked about this at your last workshop. Instead of having a report monthly, you're gonna get a report quarterly, finally.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Next, I move that we approve first read of amended policy BCB, Conflict of Interest as recommended by the policy committee.
Second. You all set?
No. Again, this is an existing policy through our work and there are a couple of new policies coming forth with regard to federally-funded projects. The one amendment in here is to add a section on a code of conduct for federally-funded projects with reference to Boyd's policy DJH. And it's also referenced in the legal references at the end.
Right. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Thank you.
I move that we approve the first read of amended policy BBDA, School Board Declared Vacancy as recommended by the policy committee.
Second. Discussion?
Yeah, one one change the policy committee wanted to recommend here. There was language in there that talked about members of the school board are expected to attend all regular meetings of the board and half meetings of the subcommittees to which they are appointed. The recommended amendment is to change that to members of the school board are expected to attend all regular meetings of the board and subcommittees to which they are appointed.
Okay. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Thank you.
I move that we approve the first read of amended policy BDG, School Attorney Legal Services as recommended by the policy committee.
Second. Discussion?
Again, existing policy. The language in the existing policy was the board would be required to designate an attorney to provide services as necessary. Interestingly, the board has not made formal designation since you've been the Elsro School Department. However, there is a law firm, Drummond Woodson, that the overwhelming majority of school departments in the state use, Elsro included. So the policy committee looked to have the language changed to the board authorizes a superintendent to designate an attorney and/or a law firm to provide such services as necessary. The remaining language in there does give the board the ability to obtain advice from attorneys other than the designated. So it does not, it does not tie you to one attorney, but it does designate.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second read and acceptance of policies.
So school volunteers, we had taken this to the, back to the board workshop to discuss how often the school training for volunteers should be. And it was decided that it would be once every three years. And that was, that was it for this piece. But I do have some discussion. Do I do that now, Brenda, or wait? Because I just noticed something before we came.
How about if we do a motion and then open for discussion?
Okay? Yep.
I move that we accept the second read and adopt policy IJOC, School Volunteers as recommended by the policy committee.
Second. Discussion?
Yes. So I was just rereading policies before we came and I noticed that in the policy, it states that volunteers must complete the application and background check. But it didn't state anything about the volunteer training. I don't know if we missed that piece.
No, it it has not been included, with regard to volunteer training, has not been included as part of the policy. Simply, that was something that was put into place when Mr. McCluskey initiated that a number of years ago. It does not need to be in the policy. I think as long as there is a consensus agreement to do it on a triennial basis, I think we're comfortable with that. Certainly, you can put it in there if you want to, I don't think it's necessary.
But good question.
Further discussion?
I would prefer to have it in writing. I mean, so it's not going by our memory or recollection. My time goes on. I would rather, I would rather have it specified in the policy. We, we talked about that for a lot to come to a conclusion.
So if you amend your second in your motion to reflect on amendment to include language saying, training is done every three years, then you can take a vote.
So I move that we amend the motion to include training every three years.
And I would second that.
Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
The second read of KI, Visitors to the School. I don't believe there, help me out with this one, Dan and Joey, I don't believe there are any changes.
No changes from the first read.
I move that we accept the second read and adopt policy KI, Visitors to the School as recommended by the policy committee.
Second. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
The last policy for a second read, AD, Educational Philosophy Mission. Help me out with this one, too, I don't believe there are any significant changes.
The, the one change that was put into this policy, there was language in the initial policy that specified certain content areas in which students would demonstrate skills. Policy committee wanted to change that to all children will demonstrate proficiency in the required curriculum.
So I move to accept the second read and adopt amended policy AD, Educational Philosophy Mission as recommended by the policy committee.
Second. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Probably should be asking if anybody opposes, but when it's five oh, it's, yeah. Item four, Report on Main School Management Association Conference. So I think this is Kelly and me. Do you want me to start you?
Go ahead, Hal.
Okay. Well, I actually went to four sessions, one on special ed, new laws, one on certification. And in certification, they talked about how they're going to try to entice regular ed teachers to go into special ed by way of providing some incentives and a different way of mentoring and certification so they can, they can get more special ed teachers. I went to a meeting on regionalization, which was most interesting. And one on board self-evaluation, because that is a hot item with us, is evaluating ourselves. And listened to some people from Kennebunk, Kennebunk, Port, and Rundell area. And I believe they used pieces of the same tool that we used in June.
Oh, really?
So which was, was quite interesting, but I have an abbreviated version. But what I really came back excited about was the keynote speaker at the first, on the first day, who was a superintendent outside of the Chicago region. And from an organization called Redefining Ready. And it talked about being, how you get your students career-ready, college-ready, and life-ready. And it talked about different, different items that you could do for the, or different skills that they could obtain in school so that they would be ready. And one of the things he said that really hit me, because part of my former job was writing the report card for the RSU, was how excited people get about the scores for the SATs. And he said in his district, he had forty percent of the students hit the benchmark for the SATs. But he said sixty-nine percent of my students had taken college courses, either AP courses or already had college credits. And he said, so what do you want? Students that really know how to take a test or students who are college-career-ready. And I was thinking back to graduation last year, Mr. Clifford, when you had the students stand up who had take, had already received college credit and how impressive that number was. Some of the things that he talked about were a grade point average for college-ready. Algebra II is, it's almost imperative that they have algebra II. Having their FAFSA form completed, and I know that that's a hurdle for some students because it involves parental assistance. He talked about having the freshmen, when they come in, write a piece on what do you want to be and do? So that they, they're at least starting to think about a goal of where they want to go, what, what skills they want to get proficient at. You know, I want to be, I want to be a plumber, well, let's see if we can head you off in that direction. I want to be, you know, an accountant. Well, these are some of the courses that you're really gonna have to shine at to be, you know. But, but as I listened, it talked about if they are ready, if we're providing them the skills to be college-ready and career-ready, then they know that they can achieve. Because they've already taken a little piece of it in high school. And they, and because of that, they are more persistent when the bumps come in school, in college later. And I, those pieces just really hit me. And he also talked about volunteerism. And he talked about even if a student does not leave your county, your, your town to go on to higher education or, or, you know, whatever, you want them to know where the opportunities are to volunteer. That you want them to be an educated citizen in your community, because they're the people who are going to be running your community down the road. I was just really inspired, I came back just, you know, and I was, I was just blown away by what he had to say. Because I, I looked at this list and I thought, we do this, we do this, we do this. Under career-ready, I talked about taking... we do this, we do this, we do this. Under career-ready, I talked about taking dual enrollment classes and learning, workplace learning experiences, and having industry credentials. And I look at this list of six items under career-ready, and we do every one of them. And so I was really, came back with this feeling of we're headed in the right direction, so.
And for what it's worth, the redefining ready is a component of the Superintendent's Association's resolution to have some of those components included in chapter 134 for graduation.
Good.
And we'll be bringing a resolution back to the board from Superintendent's Association, hopefully at next month's meeting.
Okay. So I attended some sessions, one on bullying, which was really informative. I didn't, I wasn't aware that superintendents are required to send our bullying data into the state, and people can access that information on the DOE website. And we just talked about some key pieces that should be in your model, your bullying policies, which I think we're in a really good place there. I attended one session on decision-making, and that was a long hour. It was just tough. There was a session I attended on school board advocacy, and they talked a lot about meeting with your legislators, and school boards should be doing that, which I feel like, again, we are, we're doing well. My favorite session that I attended was titled Culture Wars, and it talked about schools who face challenges like we do, about what do you do when kids come to school with a Confederate flag on their vehicles? What do you do when kids won't stand for the anthem? Or we talked about gender identity and different bathrooms. It was really interesting. It was my favorite session by far. And I was also the delegate. Thanks, Paul. And it didn't even dawn on me that I had to be the delegate until I'm walking through the doors, and I'm like, Paul's not coming. So it actually, it, the meeting went a lot faster this year than it did last year, and all of the proposed resolutions passed by landslide. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for being with us.
You're welcome.
Five, acknowledgement and acceptance of policy committee review.
That's more you.
This is me. So, as I mentioned, the Policy Committee has begun their three-year review of all policies, and we took on section B this time around. I'm not sure how many policies there are here, but we did go through each and every one of them. There must be over twenty. And we really didn't come across anything that was significant that we felt needed to be changed. There were some minor, like grammatical things, but nothing that would require a change in policy.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. It's a lot of policy reading.
Got a motion?
Can I motion take all these together?
Yep.
I move that we acknowledge and accept the review of the following policies with no changes as recommended by the Policy Committee.
You want to say as presented? As presented?
As presented.
You're in minutes.
Second. All thirty-six of you.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor? Annual review of emergency management plan.
And I provided you all with a hard copy in front of you this evening that everyone, I believe, except Rob, has seen in a prior year. What we're trying to do is have the board review and see any changes each year and approve those changes. It's a statutory requirement. I sent you a cover letter and electronic board packet today that talked a little bit about what we're providing, and I believe also was included a sheet that detailed the few minor changes. In essence, what we're talking about for changes are an update to the safety care trained staff and updates to all the different position changes, title changes. As you know, we no longer have a director of facilities and transportation, the two separate positions, that's been reflected in there. We have a new police chief compared to last year. Those are the only changes. There are no substantive changes in terms of policies and procedures and practices. But it still requires a vote for acceptance of the review on your part. One thing that I will tell you is we're actively involved with our local law enforcement and public safety partners, including emergency management. One of the things that we will be doing over the next couple of months is meeting as county superintendents to compare all of our plans, taking a look at a couple of things. One that is not completely evident in our plan, which is dealing with mental health issues. But also, there are some proposed changes to some of the response actions that a lot of emergency management agencies are looking at with particular response to intruder in schools. So that's something we're going to work on as a countywide superintendent and then bring it back to the board. That would be a more significant change. But at this time, I would welcome action to the review.
I make a motion that we acknowledge and accept the review of the emergency management plan as presented.
I second that.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Thank you.
And item six, discussion of school management and leadership centers.
And I hope you've all had a chance to at least glance at the memo that I included in your electronic packet today. Rob, I don't know if it got to you or not. I can do a quick overview of it, but I think it's important to have a brief conversation this evening with particular around school leadership and management centers. At your last workshop, you spent some time talking about some of the particulars of that legislation that came through. In fact, many people would refer to it as mini-consolidation. We all know certainly what Ellsworth School Department had for experiences going through consolidation and then deconsolidation, and there's probably not an appetite for that again. With some of the information that was presented to you in the workshop, I think it was a general consensus around the table that we're very interested in pursuing regional collaboratives with local school departments. And you know that we're working on a couple of fairly potentially significant ones, one in special education, one with regard to transportation. I think there's an appetite to pursue those types of things, but to not get locked into a consolidation or a consolidated school district. And that was based upon information we had at that point in time. One significant change that has taken place since your workshop, and it took place about the same time as the cover viewer at the conference, is that an interpretation that existing collaboratives put together under inter-local agreement statutory requirements would not count as an S M L C. The department has taken an about-face on that, Department of Ed has taken an about-face on that based upon responses from the field. There are a number of those types of organizations that exist across the state that would otherwise meet the requirements of the S M L C law. So what the department is saying now is those existing organizations can expand, and they would potentially be counted to meet the S M L C law, and districts that join that S M L C would be permitted to count as having joined. So I tried to provide you with some bulleted points, at least for a conversation. Now, the other reason for bringing this up this evening is, in response to that change, Superintendent Boothby from RSU 25 brought forth to the Superintendent's monthly meeting last Thursday, an opportunity to consider joining two existing regional collaboratives that would comply with the S M L C law. One is called the Purnav Scott River Educational Partnership. Otherwise, it was referred to as PREP, which is a professional development-oriented organization. And the other one is known as the Southern Purnav Scott Regional Program for Children with Exceptionalities. If you look at the acronym I gave you, it's commonly referred to as SPRUCE, even though that's not what the acronym is. That's a program that's been in place since the late seventies in Southern Purnav Scott County whereby school districts work together, have an executive director, have a separate board, and programming is provided for students that you cannot otherwise provide for in your own district. Superintendent Boothby is encouraging Hancock County districts to consider being part of, part one of a two-part application process. S M L Cs have a two-part application process. The first round is due the end of this month, November 30th. The second round is due April 15th of 2018. My understanding is, if you sign on to the November 30th application, part one, it is not a commitment to necessarily join. I haven't validated that yet, but that is Mr. Boothby's understanding. If you sign on on the part-two application, you are committing to starting in one of these pieces July 1 of 2018, which would impact us through the budget year. Included in this would be, by not joining, and we knew this, by not joining, you would forfeit some of your system administration allocation through the funding formula. System administration, for the viewer's information, is Superintendent's office, school board, and your finance office. You would forfeit forty-six dollars per pupil in that allocation. And additionally, there's what's known as an S M L C allocation that we have heard is two-hundred dollars per student that you would have access to if you join one of these S M L Cs. Now, one of the pieces, and this is a difficult part to calculate, when you look at the school funding formula, essential programs and services, those per pupil amounts go into calculating a per pupil cost, which is multiplied by the number of students you have in various categories. That calculates a total allocation. What essential programs and services also does is it separates that into a state share and a local share. In Ellsworth, the state share is about forty-one percent. The local share is fifty-eight. So one interpretation that I'm trying to validate this is that forty-six dollars that we would lose would actually be forty percent of that that we would lose. The two-hundred dollars would not be two-hundred, but forty percent of that. That's still one of the unknowns, and we won't know that until the funding formula is put forth for review. The only thing that exists out there at this point in time in the funding formula is a PowerPoint that's been put together by the department that talks about the changes. I'm working right now to try to determine how those figures are going to factor in. But I just want to put that out there for your information and our public's information. With regard to those pieces, in terms of determining whether or not we want to consider filing as part of the part-one application, just a couple of pieces. One, I talked about the system administration allocations. The amount that you would lose in reduction increases annually. It goes from forty-six dollars per student FY19 to ninety-four dollars per student in '20, and an amount to be determined by the commissioner in FY21. The two-hundred dollar allocation is in FY19 and '20, is my understanding, and to be determined in FY21. That's one piece we have to be concerned with. I talked about the essential programs and services funding model undergoing significant change. One of the pieces we learned in talking with our legislators last evening was, the S M L C law came into law as part of a negotiation of the final state budget last year. If you remember, at the end of the session, legislature voted to add funding for education to the budget. That was in exchange for this S M L C law. What we don't know is, through all the changes in the formula, whether or not the additional funding will make up for what we might lose in system administration allocation. I can tell you that one of the legislators last night said that, in the legislature, they're willing to work with local school departments on how to address any barriers that may prevent you from doing regional work, S M L C or otherwise. With regard to PREP and SPRUCE, they're both viable organizations that provide benefits to their members. They said PREP is a professional development group, SPRUCE is a special education and services students a special needs group. Again, both organizations are centered in Purnav Scott County. They could be potential benefit to be obtained by joining. However, there could be logistical challenges. For example, the majority of programs offered by PREP are offered in the greater Bangor area, and all of the special ed programs that you would access right now are located within the Bangor school system. So there would be a transportation component. There would also be costs associated with joining those pieces. The other piece that I think we need to consider before we make a commitment one way or the other is that both of these programs could be replicated in Hancock County. As I've already said, we're looking at, with our special ed directors, what it would look like for Hancock County to have something similar to what the SPRUCE piece is. You could do the same thing with regard to professional development. I believe there was a group years ago, DEEP?
Down East.
Down East Educational Partnership. So there are opportunities to do that. The other piece, and I know this is something that's important to you as a board, important to me as a superintendent, the law for S M L Cs sets a very high standard for being able to withdraw from one once you join. In fact, some will say it's a forever type of thing. There has been some discussion through the law firm that most of the school districts use, that carefully crafted language in inter-local agreement may make that standard for withdrawing lower. I have not been able to verify that yet. My understanding is there's a two-year window whereby districts can avoid the disincentive of losing system administration allocations and access the allocation that you would get for being part of an S M L C. Because it's a two-year window, it does provide time for the current things that we're doing in Hancock County to come to fruition for implementation of the 1920 school year. And one of the final pieces I would give you is, as is the case with the most recent round of consolidation, legislatures can and often do change their mind or amend current law. Now, we can't predict what may happen in Augusta in the future, but we know a couple of things for certain. There will be a new administration and a new legislature in January 2019. So with all of those factors, and I'll give you a chance to ask some questions, my recommendation is that we continue to do our current work on regional collaborations with our Hancock County school systems, and we're going to continue that right now, including investigation of the grand opportunities that are afforded by the DOE, and consider whether the S M L C model would be beneficial to us here. Direct me to verify whether or not signing on to the part-one application commits us to joining next year or gives us an opportunity to further explore it, and continue to work with our local legislative delegation to address the barriers of forming beneficial regional collaborations here and to take advantage of voluntary efforts to form those collaborations. So I know that's a lot for a very short period of time. Questions? Reaction?
Having gone to the meeting on this, one of the things that they did talk about was, was there an avenue to get out? And obviously, they, you know, if it didn't work or something happened, was there an avenue to withdraw? And at that point, you know, they said they hadn't found it yet. So they're still looking, I'm sure. So I think that if we can, if we can be part of the application in November, on November 30th, with the understanding of you checking in saying we don't have to, won't be a lifetime commitment, that that would be the way to go, and that gives us a little more time to study and make sure that we're doing the right things for the right reasons.
And we don't have a meeting. We do have a special meeting next week, but that's not for this purpose. You don't have a meeting where you could vote to direct me to enter into that application. You know, my piece would be, if it is a commitment to join on November 30th, I don't think we have enough information now.
No.
To make that determination.
I agree.
I would go a step further, and I would not be in favor of you putting any time and effort into reviewing whether we should even be on that first application. I don't see this as being a cost item that's grand enough to warrant your time. And I would like to see you continue your efforts in Hancock County and put your time and effort there, as opposed to putting time and effort into investigating whether we should be part of that application. Because I don't foresee wanting to go down that avenue.
I think that the penalties, I don't know if I would say a penalty.
The message coming from the department is either disincentive.
Or disincentive.
Or consequences of your choice.
Yeah.
You can call it what you want, but there would be a reduction in system administration allocation.
Significant.
It's, you know, your allocation is, no, it's a hundred and thirty-eight dollars. You would lose forty-six.
But you said forty percent of forty-six.
That's what my understanding is at this point in time. We don't know enough yet with all the changes to the essential programs and services model, whether that's going to be, I'm pretty certain that forty-six dollars would be factored out by the forty, forty-one percent piece. The two-hundred dollar value, that piece, we don't know yet. We don't know where that's going to be placed in the formula.
But that's the incentive piece, as opposed to the forty-six. But that's the incentive piece, as opposed to the forty-six dollars would be the disincentive.
Yes.
And if you were going to take a round number of how many students we would be multiplying by, I, I guessed a thousand?
Yep.
So what's the math of that? I mean, cause maybe I didn't do it right with my pencil.
If, if it's forty-six dollars per student and you don't discount it all, it's forty-six thousand dollars.
Right, but if you, if it's forty percent, it's like eighteen thousand dollars. And I, I'm not of a mind to think that I personally want you to spend a lot of time and effort investigating to go that route when you've got a good opportunity to go county.
I, I think, I think we do. I, I think my, my point on that is, you know, my, my preference would be that we're able to replicate those programs locally. If, if we needed to, um, provide services for a student in a program and the transportation was from here to Sullivan or to Bucksport rather than to Bangor or Old Town, that would make more sense for any of us.
Right.
Um, but to me, as long as filing that part-one application is not a commitment, that would give us time to take a look at that.
Yeah.
If, if, and, and I think that, that's the one question that really has to be answered is, does that constitute a commitment?
Right.
Then that gives you three months to do that investigative work. If we find out that it's a commitment on, uh, November thirtieth, you know, my recommendation to you is we don't know enough at this point in time to say we wanna go in that direction.
If that represents a commitment, or, and, and, you know, Joanne's point is that if, if it represents a significant, um, amount of work on your part to, to produce that application, submit that application, that's the second part. I, I don't know that, that it would, um, the application would be that time-consuming for you.
The, the, the application is ready to go. All we need to do is determine, do we wanna add Elsworth School Department to the list of school departments that are already there?
Right.
The, the, the biggest question to answer once again is, does that represent a commitment and are you tied into it to do it starting July one?
Right. So if we can answer that question satisfactorily, then I don't have a problem with submitting the application. I, I understand your concerns and, and I, and I, and I, and I, and I concur with them. But it just leaves some options open for us.
And I, I understand the a- aspect of leaving our options open, but I, I don't, when I'm looking at these numbers, I don't see that disincentive as being an incentive to go that route, which would be cost ineffective for travel, for membership, for, I don't see that disincentive as being an incentive to do that.
So, so if we, the Hancock County side of it, what organization would, would approve or disapprove of us?
Uh, it would be similar to what they did in Purnav Scott County. Um, both of those programs were formed by partnerships of school departments getting together, putting together a draft inter-local agreement with attorney's, uh, consultation and going to each of their individual boards for approval. So, if, if, you know...
So the state doesn't have to recognize it or endorse it?
They, they would end up having to sign off on it, if you will. But the, the power in creating it would rest with, as long as we're complying with their, um, requirements under this, uh, school management leadership center law, as long as we're complying with those, the vote of your local school boards would, would make it formalized.
Also a lot more local input and control into what goes on with us.
And again, you, you still have a two-year period in which we can still work on the pieces here and still have access to the incentivized piece of this. You know, the other piece is, and I don't think this is gonna go anywhere, there is a bill that's coming forward in the legislature, um, LR twenty-five fifty-eight, I believe, which's purpose is to remove the disincentive from the law. Prior to last night's meeting with the legislators, I was of the opinion that might gain some traction, knowing the, the depth of the negotiations that took place to add the hundred and sixty-two million in school funding in exchange for putting this law in place with a disincentive, I'm less inclined to think it's gonna go away. So I, I guess, you know, with the information that I have to give to you tonight, uh, that, that's what I can tell you, you know, my recommendation would be if, if, if you as a board would like to see me do that, you certainly could, uh, take an action to say, depending upon that, you authorize a superintendent to add to that, uh, application.
How long do we have to stand up the, the Hancock County? Was there a time limit there?
Well, for, for either of the, the major ones that we're looking at right now, having one in place to start July one of two thousand eighteen is not gonna happen. Not going to happen. July one of two thousand nineteen, um, very possible.
Any motion?
Sure.
Okay. Um, I move that we, um, allow Mr. Higgins to send in the first application, depending on whether he can, um, be assured that we are not going to be locked into this if we find that it's not good for our system.
Authorize the superintendent to join in part-one application pending verification that it is not a commitment to join.
I second that.
Discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? All those opposed?
Thank you. I will, I will investigate and I will let you know. And by policy, you have four minutes, or you have to vote to extend your meeting.
Okay.
I think you timed it very well.
Item K, calendar announcements. Special school board meeting, November twentieth, two thousand seventeen, City Hall Auditorium, six P M. School board workshop, November twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen, Elsworth School Department Conference Room, six P M. Policy committee meeting, December seventh, two, two thousand seventeen, Elsworth School Department Conference Room, six P M. Next school board meeting would be Tuesday, December twelfth, City Hall Council Chamber, six thirty P M.
And just so you know, at the workshop on the twenty-eighth, um, administrators will be coming to do a presentation of, uh, student performance data, which I think will be an educational meeting. And I think the other piece that you will need to do at, uh, I think probably your next workshop is, uh, orientation.
Orientation and also committees.
Yes.
Having no further business, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second. Discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Eight twenty-eight.